I would like to call to order the October 12, 2022 regular school committee meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this time, I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session, a non-public session, to discuss the approval of the September 21, 2022 executive session minutes and collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA with teachers. The school committee will reconvene in open session after the executive session at 6:30 p.m.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for a roll call vote. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Ms. Bea, Johnny Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. And so we are convened now at 6:00 p.m.
I would like to reconvene our October 12, 2022, regular school committee meeting at 6:30 PM. And our announcement, the October 12, 2022, regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting, please to identify themselves. Seeing nobody, I would like to ask that we all rise, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Parsons, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we don't seem to have any recognitions tonight, and our student council representative, Rania Alouhi, is not with us tonight. She'll be joining us back in November for her updates. No presentations tonight as well, so that brings us to the Citizens Forum. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Al Mancini, 15, Kenneth Lane. I kind of thought there'd be a little bit more of a prelude into this. I didn't realize I'd be jumping straight up here, you know, with nothing. Hey, I gotta be good on my feet, right? So I'd like to take a second to speak about something that is on the agenda. It's under the town attorney, the fees for the town attorney. And recently, as have been last month, there was the fourth confidentiality breach took place with special ed kids. I'm not here as a representative of the CPAC, I'm here as a parent. And I would like to say that it's the fourth one since May. And since I've been involved with the CPAC for the past seven years, there's been innumerable amounts of confidentiality breaches. And I really think that it's become part of the culture here, which unfortunately, I know that's not what you want, but I do believe that a lot of people view it as such. I spoke to one of the parents that was involved, whose kid had been involved in the breach. And when she was told about the breach by someone from the school, it was a very matter-of-fact oopsie-type thing that basically, I think represents how the town looks at confidentiality breaches for special education. And as I said, I believe that this has become accepted practice because it continues to happen. And I can honestly say that knowing some of your personal history, this affects you directly because you have kids who are on IEP/504s. And for some people, it's not a big deal. Some people don't mind if people know their business, but some do. And see, the thing is, I really think that if we look at things and we look at the history, we'll see that this has been happening quite a bit for a long time now. And because of that, I was hoping that we could try to address this situation once and for all because I know you want to do better. I know I want to do better, and I think the kids deserve better than to continually have to deal with breaches of their confidentiality because confidentiality is the word, isn't it? Confidential. I say something new in confidence, I expect you not to say anything about it. Or if you tell me something in confidence, I expect that you expect me not to say anything about it. So when there's breaches and they continually happen, what does that say? Does that say that confidentiality doesn't mean much? Because as I said, you know, sensitivity, some kids that are in the group that I, as a CPAC parent, come into contact with, some of them have extreme disabilities that maybe people don't want out there in the wind. So as I said, maybe it's a reading group. Maybe it's a reading group that this time gets exposed to Johnny Goes to Reading. Not that big of a deal. But if it's something, you know, so-and-so has feeding tubes, so-and-so has diapering issues, somebody... It might not be something that everybody wants everybody to know. So I honestly believe that we need to do better, and I know you want to do better. I know you do. And that's the thing is, it's like, I would like to think that now saying what I said, hopefully there's something to it and something comes of it because I know that everybody knows that it takes place and I know that everybody knows that it shouldn't take place. So as I said, I spoke to one of the parents involved in this latest breach. She's very upset. And because of that, it creates a negative view of everything, and we don't want that. I know you don't. I don't. And so as I say, I hope that we can right this situation as best we can because honestly, one is too many, but four since May? I just think that's way too much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mancini. We appreciate your comments. And seeing nobody else in the audience, I will move from Citizens Forum to Mrs. Bea Joanie Smith to the approval of minutes.
Okay, I move the committee to approve the minutes dated September 21st, regular meeting minutes, September 21st, 2022.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that.
Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And no oppose, so that passes unanimously. And moving on to the submission and payment of bills.
All right, I move the committee to approve the payroll period ending September 29th, 2022 in the amount of $1,483,897.75.
Do we have a second?
I'll take, I'll second.
Mr. Russo for a roll call vote for the pay period payroll ending September 29th, 2022, certified and approved in the amount of $1,483,897.75. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bea Joanie Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote as well. And moving on to our superintendent and staff report, this is Teri O'Regan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first update I'd like to give you, at the end of September, the Assistant Superintendent, Ms. McDermott, and I attended the New England Association of School Superintendents Annual Conference. The focus this year was on Profiles of the Future, of the Future of Education, and envisioning district leadership, teaching, and student skills. We heard from nationwide consultants on redefining student success and rethinking our vision for profile of our graduate or learners. Sound familiar, I'm sure. We also heard from New England school superintendents sharing strategies on how to stay connected and reengage with our students, our staff, and our community stakeholders. The wonderful thing when you get to go to these conferences is the networking, obviously, you do with other district leaders, not only in this case from the state of Massachusetts, but all throughout New England. Both Ms. McDermott and I felt really proud of the work we're doing here in Tuxbury and how really what we were hearing really validated not only what we're doing with our staff and students, but the support that you're giving us. Thank you for allowing us to attend that conference. On that note, on that work topic, November 1st is an early release day for our students, but an afternoon of professional development for our staff where we will be receiving whole staff feedback on that district strategic planning, where staff will have input on the district vision and then planning the vision for all of our learners K through 12. Our students will be participating in this endeavor, and that will take place in November with both the high school and middle school students. Parents will receive the digital version of the survey in our next district-wide newsletter. Today was our PSAT day here at the high school for our juniors and sophomore students. Approximately 300 students took the PSATs during the school day. We had about 90 students absent. Seniors had this valuable time to focus on their post-secondary planning, like visiting colleges or institutions, writing resumes, practicing on their interview skills, while freshmen participated in several team-building and fostering sense of belonging activities together. Each year, we always thank you, the committee. This has been a longstanding practice now for Tuxbury Public Schools, where you have supported our funding of every junior and sophomore taking the PSATs. In the future, we're going to reevaluate the necessity of funding every junior and sophomore. As I just said, we had about 90 students not choose to participate and be absent for the day. We do host the assessment, the PSAT, during the school day. But what we're thinking of, where less and less colleges are not only requiring SATs, this is a practice, requiring or even encouraging all students to take SATs in their planning for their future. We will evaluate whether this should be a sophomore and junior student choice. So rather than miss a day of school, choose to take the test, and then we'll have, you know, the appropriate student assessments available to our students and still fund them. So we'll give you more update on that as we evaluate the need. We'll survey our students moving forward on that. I do want to thank Karen Baker-Bryan and obviously the Tuxbury Memorial High School administrative staff and the staff in general for making this a great day for our students. Likewise, at the Tuxbury Memorial High School, we hosted our freshmen, and bookending the level of students. We hosted our parent freshman and senior informational breakfast meetings earlier this month. Parents that were not able to attend either of the live meetings can go to our Tuxbury Memorial High School Guidance website and find the voiceover of those presentations or certainly reach out to your child's guidance counselor or administrator. Today, our district leadership team was hosted by the Wynn Middle School staff and administration. We participated in small-group instructional rounds, looking, poking into classrooms and really observing practice. The goal of this session really was, part of our district goals, building our instructional leadership team, building our administrators, and calibrating what they're observing when they do these rounds. So we went through a couple activities with our leadership team. We broke off into groups of three or four and visited three to six classrooms each, came back, and then articulated some feedback for Principal Ware and Assistant Principal Cordiera so they could support their staff. Their goal, one of their goals, whole-school goals, is improving student engagement in the teaching and learning process. So that's what we focused on and calibrated our look for, what were we looking to observe and what feedback we could give. It was a great process for our district leadership team that will continue in each of our schools as a whole group. On the topic of district improvement and improving our systems and individual practice, and on the topic that our speaker was at the podium for a minute ago, Tuxbury Public Schools is conducting an audit to determine where and how we can improve our systems and individual practice, as I said, in regards to protecting student and personnel confidential data. We have consulted with Steve Smith. He's from K through 12 Privacy Consultants, who also works closely with the Student Data Privacy Consortium. You've heard us refer to that as the SDPC. In the past few years, we've taken steps to improve in this area. They have included whole-system audits, and I'll give you an example. We've inventoried all of our digital resources. We obtained data privacy agreements for all of our digital resources. We call them DPAs. We joined the Student Data Privacy Consortium, that SDPC. We've conducted an audit of our Google console, our Google platform. We've implemented a new unified threat management system, UTM. It's otherwise a firewall, how we protect our system from vulnerability and data breaches. And we've also added language to our acceptable use policy regarding the use of digital resources and provided different and multiple mandated trainings for our staff related to sending digital communications and related to FERPA. This audit is intended to look at all of those systems, look at our practices, and provide us information on where we can improve in this effort, whether through that system or individual practice. Mr. Smith will not only review all of those documents and our systems, but also interview district leaders and staff members around their practices with student data and personnel data. What our goal is, once he's completed this audit, will be to share with you, with the district, our strengths and areas of needed improvement. We clearly are dedicated and committed. If there is a better tool or a better way for us to improve our system or, as I said, individual practices and human error, we're looking for that. So we're happy to have Mr. Smith on board. He just got started. I assume this is going to take, Mr. Stam tells us, a good month, maybe a little bit more, to get a comprehensive report from him. I'll share that with you, as I said, when that is complete. Our administrative team also continues to work with our related grade two through four staff to keep them updated on the move and transition process to the new center elementary school. In fact, Mr. Harding has put together an internal Google class to help keep our staff updated throughout this process. So all of the schedules and information we share with them, they can continue to access through that Google class. We also have worked with the contractor to schedule visits at the end of October for the related grade two through four staff at the end of a school day. So we'll go in small groups so they can visit the new school and see the classroom, that they'll be, maybe not their own personal classroom, but the scale of the classroom, the storage needs to help them in the facilitation of packing and moving. So this move and transition is coming really soon. It is real. We look forward to sharing more details with our families as well as we approach November and December. And finally, there are so many wonderful events happening at our schools this fall. I couldn't possibly list them all, but I'm going to just share some of the major ones. On October 23rd, our NHS and Tuxbury Police Department are hosting a trunk-or-treat here at the high school. This is one of, I think, many trunk-or-treats that are happening around the district. On October 29th is Apple Fest Craft Fair here at the high school, and November 10th, the Harvest Fair at the Ryan. There's so many more. Parents are encouraged to visit our district website. Certainly, go to those filters and find your child's school and look at those calendar details there. Read those newsletters that are coming out in the PAC email blast. There are a lot of great events happening and a great opportunity for our kids and families to reconnect on these fun events. So, and if you have any questions, parents, please feel free to reach out to your child's school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. McDermott?
Did you?
Oh, any, sorry. Any questions, comments? Mr. Parsons?
Yep, I just have a question regarding the PSAT. Would it be possible to have that PSAT session not during regular school hours? And instead substitute that for a regular instructional day or some other kind of enrichment day?
And traditionally, prior to the, I think, two school committees, groups ago, we did do that. And we had a lower interest, if you will, because kids are so busy, right, during Saturdays and after school. So we made the commitment and decision to make sure every single student had the opportunity to take the PSAT and not at their cost because we also knew that would impact some families' ability to take the PSATs. So we certainly will look at all options again. We need to talk with the kids. We need to talk with their families, what really is in their best interest. And we know that if we have a smaller cohort taking the PSAT, that means we have to plan activities for those sophomores and juniors alike, just like we do the freshmen and seniors. So a little bit of planning and thinking it through. What we would, don't, we're not in the, what we're not interested in doing is certainly requiring something that then students are absent because they choose not to be part of that assessment. So we'll look at that, but I appreciate the suggestion. That is how we used to handle it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just as Mrs. Reagan said when I started, we had first started the PSAT. I would hate to see that. I'm okay with it being optional, quite honestly. I think it's a, that's a good avenue with less kids taking it. I do also understand Mr. Parsons wanting to have quality instruction for our students that aren't going to participate, but we got a lot of feedback. I was a new member and people, students and families were very happy that they were here in a comfortable environment that they're used to to be able to really put their best foot forward to take those tests. So I'd hate to see it go away. I certainly understand, you know, we don't want a mandate. I certainly understand, you know, we don't want to mandate anything. I think everyone out there knows I'm not a mandate guy. But I would, I would like to see us continue for those students that I think really will do better in, you know, a home game, sitting here and having it paid for and being able to do their best effort. So, and I'm looking forward to the audit. When Mrs. Garabedian told me that you had approached her regarding that, I thought it was wonderful. I certainly look forward to that report. No one's perfect. I understand human error happens, but I do agree, we can do better, and I think this is a good first step to it. So thank you for that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Russo?
I simply was just going to echo what my colleagues said, Mr. Sullivan, specifically to the audit. Yeah, I really appreciate that you're taking the initiative to handle that. I mean, as we sort of heard from Mr. Mancini tonight, I think, you know, I think he raises some valid points, and I think that, you know, I appreciate the fact that the district is attempting to do better in that regards. And again, you know, we're all human beings. Things happen. So it's, how do we move forward and address it so that it doesn't happen again? And I think you're taking the steps, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to those recommendations and the results of that report.
Thank you. We do too.
Ms. Bea Jones Smith?
Thank you. So with regard to the PD day to go over the district's goals, will the feedback from that be shared with the committee?
This will be an opportunity, as I said, those questions that you participated in and in Town Wy-PAC will now be shared with the entire staff, and they'll all have opportunity to give us feedback on that. That'll be, there'll be a lot of data collected between now and December. So the feedback to the committee will be those themes and, much like we did those affinity groupings on the, on the Vision of a Learner, that work will be done together with our consultant, together with help from the admin team to take all of that data and see, where do we cluster it? Will, our best goal would be to put that back out to the staff. Is this what you meant?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can get some clarity again. And in that timeframe, as I said, between now and December, I doubt we'll share all the data with you, but we'll definitely share what themes and what topics seem to really rise to the top from the majority of stakeholders.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have one more.
Yeah, sure.
I too am excited for this audit to see what comes from it and what we can learn from what's been done and what can be done better. I know you mentioned there's about a month it could take or more to compile all of the findings and have Mr. Smith then present to yourself or to the committee. And then I was wondering if there is a timeframe on how long we're contracting with them or if there's a phase two approach. So whatever his findings are, if we then will work with them, the company, the organization, to document, to make the process improvements or whatever it might be to help us move forward.
That's a great question. I don't have the answer to that, but I certainly can review his contract. There's several bullets. He gave us quite a lengthy expectation of what he's going to do with the district. But I'll review that and get back to you on that.
Thank you so much. And then just to send out a positive note, I'm sure that the staff is so excited to see the new school. I've heard everybody talking about it, so I think that's going to be a really fun day for everybody, whichever day it falls on for them, and I think that they had something to look forward to.
I mean, it could be, you know, just a matter of weeks before we're getting the keys to that building, so it's really exciting. I agree.
Okay. Thank you. My only comments were, I'm actually really excited to hear, and I don't think this was discussed, to have staff input, family input, student input. So I'm excited to see just how that all comes together for the district plan. And I think that, you know, it gets me thinking. I hope it gets the committee thinking in terms of maybe next year, as you're putting, as the goals are coming together, that the committee can somehow formulate some sort of committee goals in terms of, you know, moving forward. I think seeing the changes and a lot of the new growth in thinking and mindset in the district, I think that can trickle, you know, down from us as well. So I'm looking forward to that. And then the audit, same thing, everything else, everything else the same. So, you know, it's great work, and I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you. And Mrs. McDermott?
Thank you. I was just going to add, what was fun for us at the conference that Brenda mentioned we went to is there was a lot of talk in even some small groups around Portrait of a Graduate and how to move that work from the website into practice, like into real life, like now that you've come up with what that looks like. So we were feeling really excited and optimistic about the fact that we're looking a little deeper into the portrait of the whole learner, right, that vision for that whole learner, and working with Cale Burke to identify those observables of what actually would bring it to life in the classrooms. So that felt really exciting, like we were happy that we were, we were in that work, but we were also even more excited to think, hmm, we're actually digging a little deeper and kind of getting ahead of some of the issues that can come from just developing that, that portrait that just becomes the poster, or kind of the vision on the website, but not, not really living that reality. And I think that is the next step, and it's embedded into this work, which I found really exciting. Speaking of Cale Burke, he is back in the district this week, holding some virtual meetings with building principals and PLC leads again. He calls these heat checks, and he uses his time to check in with the teams. He's very focused on moving from the, the idea of this being like the Cale work, as he's heard it referred to, but more into the real work and trying to help the teams really bridge it so that it is meaningful work and that it's not something extra, but that it's really embedded into what they're doing. So he was working with them today around, two of the schools today, around just some strengths, some, some successes they're having, some of the challenges, and then, and then where to go next. So on Friday, he will be back virtually to meet with the rest of the schools, and that will continue to help with our instructional data meetings, which is the next point I wanted to mention. So as I mentioned last time we met, we had completed our DIBELS universal screener in grades K through four. And now with that work, so having that data so quickly allowed our reading specialists to quickly identify students who they needed to pull into intervention groups and start some targeted instruction. So that was great. We wanted to take that a step further this year and have established data team meetings across all four of the lower elementary schools, so the K-2s and the 3-4 schools. These meetings involve district literacy coaches in partnership with the building principals and the classroom teachers. We'll be leaving, leading grade-level team meetings during the month, throughout this whole month of October. And basically, what's happening is the teachers and the coaches will be using protocols to review and interpret the district DIBELS data, building and classroom literacy data, and kind of use this information to discuss some of the implications for teaching and learning. So the focus of the meetings will really be to determine best instructional practices that will positively impact our student outcomes right away. So this is exciting work to get started so early in the year. So we're not only looking at, at the tier-two focus with the reading specialists, but that tier-one within the classroom. So it's good news there, and that's about all I have for that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have none. Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
No, none at this time. Great, thank you.
I don't either. Thank you. Mr. Libby?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Brief update on our bus app we rolled out this month. The My View app is up and running in the district. We have just under 400 user accounts at this time. I don't have a breakdown of, the system doesn't break down like what grade levels those accounts are at, but we know it's just under 400 users right now. We've had less, just under a dozen emails requesting help getting set up, so setup's going fairly well. I think it's pretty, pretty simple to get, for folks to get set up on their phone or ask their kids to help them set it up, whatever the case may be. But seems to be up and running for many families in the district, and I think it'll be helpful with, lately, we've had a flurry of road construction around town. I think it's the end of the season, trying to get some things done, so it's affecting our bus times in the afternoons particularly. So we'll do another round of outreach to try to encourage other families to get on the app, just to see if times are affected by those, by those construction projects that are going on around town. That's all I have for you guys tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Russo?
Just one, actually. Now that we're a month and a half or so into the school year, are you seeing a decrease in the number of pickups and drop-offs sort of throughout the school, or, you know, at the beginning and end of school?
Yeah, we've actually seen an increase in bus riders this year as compared to last.
Okay, good.
Overall, across the schools. I don't know if people are just more comfortable with the bus than they were with, when we had some, we still had some restrictions last year with the windows and things like that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to comment on the bus app. I've heard a lot of great things. I think there were some glitches in the beginning with it. I have some glitches in the beginning myself, and I think it just, for some reason, it just seems like it took a couple days for the app itself to catch up to what you were trying to do or something. I don't know what, I don't know, I don't know how to explain any of that stuff, but I have heard some really great things about the app. And I would say that an option would be to utilize your PAC meetings to push that out in their meeting minutes, just as a reminder to have families sign up. I know it's in the district newsletters and in the principal's smores.
Right.
But those PAC newsletters sometimes reach people differently.
Yeah.
Or, you know, you might click on one and not one, one and not the other each month, so maybe they can push that out for you because it really is great. I get a two-minute warning when the bus is coming up the street, so I hope more people take advantage of that. That's all. Thank you. Great.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I saw a middle-aged child run out about 30 seconds before today, this morning, actually, and I thought of the app. I wonder if that kid has the app. My only question, the 400 users, are we fine on like, is it one per household? Could that be like myself and my wife, is that the same user account that, do we know? Do we not know? Just curious about how many people we might think are actually, I know a lot of people take the bus, certainly. 13% of our student population, but let me see if it shows the breakdown of the number of kiddos.
Is that 13% of the student population that take the bus?
Um, no, overall. We uploaded the whole student population. And that includes students that are currently driving here at TMHS? Uh, that's unique students. So it's just under 400 students have been activated.
So it does sound like two parents of the same student, it's counting as the unique student, not how many users are tracking that student.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because they.
I was just curious, you know?
You need to enter the student's ID, so that means 391 student IDs have been activated. Okay, so if the two parents are somewhere, they're both on, they both get the same alert in the same place, it goes as one user. Yep, they could, you could, both parents could use the same student ID to have the app on their, on two devices. Excellent. All right, thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
I have none. Thanks for the positive update.
I have no questions either. Thank you very much. Okay, that moves on to the consent agenda. Mrs. Terry Regan, did you have anything?
I, no, I, nice and lighter than usual, I guess, would be a nice comment, and, yeah. I mean, it's always sad when we have folks give us their notice at this time of the school year, but, you know, we're working with our principals and working with other districts to stretch out that timeline if needed, when people are, you know, finding themselves other jobs now. I guess I would just say that. Please know that even with some resignations, we, other districts are being really helpful in keeping those teachers in our class as long as we can before we find the replacement.
Okay. Any comments from anybody on the committee?
Just, just one question. In terms of open positions overall, where does the district stand at the moment with just the number of open positions that we have?
I can't give you the number right off the top of my head, but we're in really good shape. Again, I would say our struggle is around the classroom aid and the Delta T or HR precision one on, one-to-one aid. We still struggle to fill all of those positions.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve or?
I need that motion to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so that passes unanimously for the consent agenda. And then our school committee member reports, Mr. Sullivan, on the elementary school building committee?
Yes, I will have a update. We are meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
So I'll have an update at our November meeting.
And Tewksbury CPAC?
CPAC will be having their regular business meeting on October 20th. They did ask a school committee update on district protection, preventive measures around student identity confidentiality. I'm just going to refer to Superintendent Regan's comments on that earlier.
Okay.
That's all for now, though.
Thank you. And Mr. Russo on the wellness?
Yeah, we did meet about a week or so ago to talk about a few different things. One, the food services program has started the after-school snack program here at TMHS for athletics in any after-school programs that are, that are being held, so that is available to those students. They've also been assigned a wellness coach. Miss Nicole Good from DESI is going to be, you know, helping both Kelly Constantino and Deb Bugford, who participate in the wellness committee and are a part of that, in terms of helping us out with our wellness policy itself, as well as being able to, you know, give us, you know, helpful guidelines in what's acceptable versus non-acceptable from a wellness standard standpoint. And then the last thing I'll just say is that the district has brought in a new dietitian to also help with gluten-free options. A note would be required for that, just because there is an added cost to that aspect of it. But I think all in all, we are looking, I know we've, we brought in, or next meeting, we're bringing in Ronnie Drewin as well, and the committee is looking at potentially trying to add to itself, sort of getting back to where we were pre-pandemic with that committee. So more to come on that. We'll have more, we'll have more to talk about at that point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The dietitian that's coming in to talk about the gluten-free options, would that be for all school-provided food?
Yes, to my knowledge, yeah. I don't know.
Obviously, to have options that every different, you know, dietary need would include, and that, that's, that's really important to Deb Bugford as well. We've really stretched that menu to be, you've heard her cooking from scratch, but how do we make sure the ingredients meet the needs of so many students?
Oh, that's great.
So all school levels in variety for the needs of many.
That's awesome. That's great. Thank you.
And Mr. Sullivan on the policy subcommittee?
Yes, the policy subcommittee met on September 27th, and it resulted in us looking at, I think, almost all of the CE policies. Looks like one that we didn't take action on and make the recommendations and following policy changes, proposals, and adoptions. These policies were reviewed and adopted with no changes. These are date-only and require an informational item only, and those are CE, administrative councils, cabinets, and committees, and CH, policy implementation.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on CE or CH to be reviewed and adopted with no changes? Okay. Do we have a motion to?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Second.
Were you confused?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm sorry.
It was policy subcommittee, and I think he just went right into policy.
Yeah, you're fine. I caught up. My brain caught up quick.
So, Mr. Russo, you have a motion?
Yeah.
Yep, and I'll second that.
Ms. Bea Jones Smith. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, that passes unanimously.
Okay, and then the following policies for consideration for revision and/or adopt per the MASCE recommendation, these are informational reading only, still require a first reading and a second and final reading, and those policies are BDG, school attorney, CA, administration goals, CB, school superintendent, CBD, superintendent's contract, CBI, evaluation of the superintendent, CCB, line and staff relations, CHA, development of procedures, CHCA, approval of handbooks and directives, and CHD, administration and policy absence. Once again, those are information only and require no action this evening.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns, comments on those?
Madam Chair, I just had one. When I was reading through all the policies, most of the his, her, he, she was all changed to they, their pronouns. There was just, in CB, there were still his, hers, and he, she's. So I just wanted to point out that in case you were looking for consistency throughout all of them.
As I remember, MAS C had actually looked at these this last year, so we did take their language a lot on some of this stuff.
It was the only, yeah, it was the only one I saw that in. I just saw that the changes were in the others, so I just didn't know if that was something deliberate or not.
Great.
CB?
CB, correct.
CB, the school superintendent.
Yep.
Gil, can you just make that notation, please, for the record? And we'll make sure that's reflective when we bring it back on the first reading. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Any other comments?
Policy for consideration for revision on first reading, BGC, policy revision and review.
Okay, any questions on BGC?
No.
And once again, that's a first reading. It still requires a second, final reading and a vote. With that, policies for consideration for revision on second and final reading, IMG, animals in school, IJOA, field trips, JGH, student travel, JGH-R, student travel regulations, DD, funding proposals and applications, DIE, audits, EFC, free and reduced-priced food services, and BBA, school committee powers and duties.
Comments, comments? Because we will be voting on these tonight. Do you have a second?
Nope, no.
Mr. Parsons?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none as well. So do we have a motion to adopt in second and final reading? IMG, JGH, JGH-R, DD, DIE, EFC, and BBA?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in, yeah, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And that passes unanimously for those.
Okay, and then our final set of policies for consideration to rescind on first and final reading, CHC, procedures dissemination, CHCA-E, approval of handbooks and directives, and CL, administrative reports. And these all were recommendations, CHC per MAS C. And it actually turned into CHA, which is why they recommended rescinding CHC. CHCA was an exhibit only and per the MAS C, as long as things are covered on the policy as we've done prior. They recommend rescinding the exhibits. And the CL administrative reports were to be in alignment, recommended to rescind by MAS C.
Any questions? Almost three.
No.
Okay, so that is also a motion for, we would entertain a motion on that for tonight. Rescind.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And that is a motion and a second to rescind first and final reading, CHC, CHCA-E, and CL. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, so that passes unanimously. And old business?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item in old business is just simply an update. It's informational only. There's no vote needed. It is an enrollment update for October of 2022. If you remember, I shared with you our September numbers. There's always ebb and flow, late registration, late withdrawals in the first month of school. So in total, we're up five students from what I shared with you in September. This enrollment will not be verified until October 28th. So in November, I'll share with you the verified student enrollment for the 2022 school year.
Any questions or comments? Enrollment numbers? Seeing none, we can move on. Now to our new business.
Yeah, in your packet, you have the MCAS access schedule that's been put out by the state. That's informational only. No vote is needed. We, as a district, will be taking a closer look at that and determining the exact weeks and days for our students here in Tewksbury to schedule that testing. And we'll get that out to families prior to the winter break in December. People always like to know when those fun days are, are coming. To that end, the 2022 MCAS data has been released, and the parent reports will be sent home this Friday, and they will be coming via U.S. mail. So they will not be going home in backpacks, but please keep an eye out in your mailbox for that. And they, they will be, again, leaving, leaving the district at some point on Friday. We are combing through the data carefully here. In fact, next month, I'll have a presentation planned for you just to show how our students performed here in Tewksbury and talk a little bit about our plan moving forward. Overall, you know, Brenda and I were able to attend a meeting with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education just to review the statewide scores and to talk about, you know, the overall impact. And it's clear, I mean, what we learned is the pandemic, obviously, you know, it had an effect across the state. We're, we're still a ways away from recovering from, from that learning loss. Across the state, achievement levels are below 2019. For me, I, I say, of course they are, right? This is before we had a pandemic and we completely uprooted kids from their schools and designed learning plans in a, in a whole new way in practically a moment's notice. So while we're not surprised, it's never fun to see. So I think it's important to note that, that some of the things that I've been thinking about is, you know, when we returned to school last year, and remember, I wasn't here, but I think I can, I can speak for Tewksbury because I think I can speak for the nation. We were so excited to have kids back and so excited to get back to school the way that we knew it. And what we learned as teachers and administrators and school officials that the kids weren't, they weren't ready for that. They had been out of school for a long time. They were in very unique and, you know, a real variety of situations. And so we, we had to pull ourselves back. I mean, I spent a lot of time, you know, encouraging and counseling teachers to say, we've got to slow down. We've got to take care of the kids in front of us and respond to the needs that we're seeing. And what we were seeing was kids who, who needed to relearn how to be in school, who needed to relearn how to learn. Much of what you learn in school is how to persevere through tough stuff and how to keep going when it's hard. And that was, those, those types of things were hard to have the same impact in our, in our different, a variety of settings. We also, you know, we learned how to share space with other people in our classrooms and in our, our different classes. And we found that that was a challenge for our kids. So in all honesty, I say kudos to our teachers for giving, you know, addressing the needs that were in front of them. And I think the big need was, was their social-emotional learning. And so hopefully, we have, you know, because of that support, I'm way off my little script here, by the way. My husband always worries when I get off the script. I, I hope that we will see the results of, of just that, that love and care and, and attention to the needs that were in front of us. And that I do feel already that kids have come back in a better place. So the other important, I think, thing, I think, to note is that we were still dealing with COVID concerns and regulations last year. And because of that, attendance for staff and students was impacted. And it'll be interesting to see how that, how that plays out this year because we still do have the five-day, you know, expectation that kids are home, yeah, in isolation for those five days, and sometimes longer, depending upon, you know, how you're feeling. So keeping all that in mind, the other thing I want to point out is that, again, in my own reflection, remember, in, in 2020, so we, we ended, we had a regular year 2019. In 2020, we did not test. And then in 2021, we had an abbreviating, abbreviated testing situation for only students in grades three through eight. And it wasn't even the full, the full test. So for our 10th graders last year who took the test, they hadn't taken an MCAS test since seventh grade. That's, that's big, you know? So considering all of that, I like to keep the glass half-full. And I think overall, our kids, you know, while the results aren't, aren't great, they participated, and I truly believe that, that they did the best that they could. The other thing of note is that our third graders take MCAS for the first time. That's when they're introduced to it. And our third graders hadn't had a normal, traditional year of school since they were in kindergarten. That was the last time they had a regular school year. So the fact that we were testing was, was real tough for, for most of us to get our head around anyway, right? But we did, and our kids rose to, to the challenge. So these are the things that we can't change. And as a result, the state is expecting us to look at our 2022 data as our new baseline, right? And we're gonna, we're gonna move students from here. For me, here in Tewksbury, I've, I'm, I'm excited by that. I feel like we have so many things in place right now that are going to support our students' growth. You know, for example, one of the things that the state really focused on was early literacy because that was an area where, you know, they saw that the gap still exists. And it was a little better in, in math and science across the state. Yeah, a little. But ELA, and, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as you know, is really focused on, on early literacy because we know the impact. We know how important it is to support our students early. So I feel like the good news is that, that that is our main, one of our main initiatives this year is to really support that early literacy. And we have so many things in place, including the, as you know, HEGARDY for, you know, developing phonemic awareness, foundations for our phonics. We're looking at, at two really highly-rated, DESI-approved ELA curriculum. We have those pilots that are running now. We have a K4 screener, universal screener for dyslexia. We have literacy coaches who are supporting our classroom teachers and reading specialists to provide that intervention. We have time for professional learning communities with two consultants. We have Kale Burke, who is supporting us to find, you know, what are the observables? Where are we seeing, you know, what are we expecting to see? How do we know if our instruction is meeting the needs of our students? We're also consulting with Alex Hirschberg, who is a clinical psychologist and supporting us around our MTSS framework and how to, you know, initiate some tiered supports around social-emotional learning. We're looking at how to, you know, really focusing on collecting, analyze, and interpreting data to inform our instruction. So in that regard, I feel like we are, we're in a good place to, to move forward. The other thing that we're doing is we're really focusing on a commitment and a partnership with our special education team. That's something that I am very passionate about. It's something that Rick Pelletier is very passionate about, along with Candace Thrall, with our, our district special education director and assistant director. And so we have a district team that includes myself, our director of special education, assistant director, director of literacy, and one of our literacy coaches. And we applied for an opportunity with Melissa Orkin, who is, comes from Crafting Minds. And she is also a psychologist, but a real expert in the area of dyslexia and learning disabilities. And we were approved, I think, because of, they were really looking for district-level teams, and they really wanted people from different, they really wanted to make sure that we were kind of brushing a broad stroke to reach different departments. I think because we had so many district-level administrators interested. And so this is a 45-hour course. It's called "Paving the Way for Reading Proficiency for All Students, Including Those with Dyslexia." That's the title. And so it's already got us diving into data and looking at equity versus equality, you know, what's. And so I think that this work is going to help us lead our building leaders and, and district coaches and classroom teachers to really have an impact on student achievement. We're also closely monitoring attendance data carefully as this clearly impacted performance across the state. Alex Hirschberg is, is helping us with that as well. And when I say monitoring, you know, monitoring and intervening. So if we're seeing some, obviously, kids are still going to be out. But it's really important to us to reach out to families and connect and say, how, how you doing? How can we help? Do you have what you need? What can we do to get your student back in school? If, you know, because there are lots of different issues that students are have, having with coming back from being home all the time and, and back to a typical school schedule. So we're looking at that very carefully. So while the data is not all that exciting, I, I am excited about the growth that I, we could potentially see and that we will strive for.
Questions around? Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's, I really struggle with this topic because, because DESI takes a stance that it's not good. Great, no kidding. Everybody knew that.
Right.
Everybody knew that. And although I am excited and ecstatic to hear the things that Tewksbury is doing, I am beyond mortified with DESI's, oh, we'll just use 2022 as a new baseline.
Yeah.
So in other words, we have a whole generation of kids that have been impacted, and we're just gonna be, we're just gonna take that as it is, and we're supposed to all be okay with that.
Yeah.
So I guess what I would first maybe ask, since you guys were at that meeting with DESI, what is DESI's position of what they're doing to not only support Tewksbury, but support all the districts across the Commonwealth? Sort of how did they take that? How did they answer that question, I guess, maybe overall?
Yeah, I feel like they are. I honestly, I feel like more than ever, and I think I might have even mentioned this in my interview, I've never really been, you know, a big fan, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because it is a lot of mandates that sometimes don't feel like they make sense. But I do feel like they are looking at our needs, and that's where these, these grants are coming out. That's where these, these courses are becoming available. That's where they're, they're, you know, really evaluating different curricula and putting out, you know, these, these are the, the research-based resources that you want to be, that we, that you want to be using. It's not just, you know, left up to you anymore. I do feel like they are trying to partner with districts. And, and to your point, what else are they gonna say, right? This is, this, to compare, because I find myself frustrated with compare it to 2019. How can you, right? We, because they're saying you can't compare it to last year because it was abbreviated test, not everybody took it. But if you look back at, at 2019, well, yeah. That's, that's, that's also a tough pill to swallow because our kids hadn't had this incredible interrupted schooling. And that's just the, that's just the very top layer, right? We know that this goes much deeper than interrupted schooling, right? There's a lot with this. So I look at that and say, we're gonna, we're, we're back. And I think that we're all so, so happy to be back. And I think Tewksbury in particular. This is a new year for Tewksbury, right? There was, last year was a challenging year on many, many fronts. And so I feel really excited about doing, doing right by our students and giving them what they need. Now, do we still have to take into, into account that, that there's still social-emotional concerns out there? Sure. But I think we have a lot of supports in place.
Is that my time limit?
I think it was mine.
Okay. We grapple with that as well. It really is the dichotomy of how important is this accountability one test? And then the experience we really want for our students. And what we've learned in this big glut, the learning loss, is we can do better, and this is not the only way to measure it. Commissioner Riley came to the conference that we were at. Commissioner Riley came to the conference that we were at and argued that as well. However, in the state of Massachusetts, we're certainly not gonna not have an accountability system that's very rigorous and that is important. But what should that look like moving forward now that we know what we know? Think about those, we're very cognizant of our third graders and our high school students. And this is why Ms. McDermott talked about that. In those years of learning to learn, learning to read, learning to write, learning all of that, you know, then they take an MCAS test where they hadn't been traditionally in class. And the high school students, where now it's a high stakes test and has, it has been since seventh grade that they've been sitting down to that type of assessment. So the data is one thing, but the whole in-between is a big story. So Commissioner Riley encouraged us to stay on the right path around student learning and what's important. Don't lose sight of that, even though the accountability story is messy right now. I believe we have the resources and supports in place and working together with our staff and our administration. We, we have the ingredients there to do the best for our kiddos. But yeah, this is gonna be difficult data to dig through. We're gonna have to look at the, the wins along with the, you know, disappointments. And our staff haven't had these types of data meetings even in years. So, and I know, you know, Mr. Parsons has an educator too. This, this, our focus has been on, you know, keeping everyone safe and learning and to the best. Now we have to keep those gains with that, together with the content, and how do we make it better for students and families? So I, I just think parents are gonna be getting these reports and we need to do some work with our parents to help them understand the difference in their kiddo who may have been exceeding everything three years ago and now, what do you mean? It's a partially meeting. That is not a reflection on the child. That's a reflection on the learning loss and the time and just everything. So, you know, there, there's, there's a lot to share. You can hear our passion around teaching and learning. And the accountability piece is tough. And we'll share the data with you a little bit better. But, you know, I, I recommend that we don't put all our eggs in this MCAS basket. It just isn't the whole story.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, just to keep talking, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, reiterate some of the same stuff, but it does worry me, the teaching to test versus the teaching to learn and, and the fear that, you know, we're pushing kids to, to get right back into these tests and their score's gotta get up. And the pressure of making this 2022 year, this new baseline, is worrisome. Rushing kids to catch up is, is, I'm just worried that they're not ready for that pressure. And then you just made me think, when you mentioned families, that's so true, because I would completely look at it and, and look at something like that. But is there a thought to maybe having an info session? Yes.
And, and we, and as we even find the time to really dig deep with the data, with the principles, we have to think that through at multiple grade levels. As I said, I think some parents may be concerned at the, at the 10th grade level, because, you know, that, that held some weight in the past, right? Around grants and awards. So, yeah, we have, we have to figure that out as well. What, what is the right message for the differing grade levels and how do we help parents understand it?
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, oh, boy, I've been biting my tongue. I certainly understand and don't want to get into a philosophical debate about high stakes testing and accountability and all that goes along with that. And, oh, it's gonna be an assessment this year. I also, Mr. Riley came here years ago, met with him. Mrs. McDermott, I'm thrilled to hear you leaning a little bit about, you know, how important teaching, as my colleagues said, to the test and teaching. How do we go about advocating? If DESI, some people at DESI are saying, if some people at this table are saying, there's already a tremendous amount of stress for students pre-pandemic with all of this MCAS stuff. And there's always been loads and loads of conversations about what's best for students. But what I'm not hearing from DESI, and I'm not blaming anyone at this table, don't get me wrong, what I'm not getting from DESI is, excuse me, what can we do better? I don't have the answers. I'm not an educator. But if there's already all this stress and anxiety for students and families prior, and it's only highlighted by the pandemic, when is DESI or, when does our state delegation, when does our government, when does our governor, when do our House of Representatives say, hey, listen, maybe we need to change the system or maybe we need to tweak the system? As opposed to just saying, okay, well, in our instance in Tewksbury, here you go, Mrs. McDermott, here you go, Mrs. Regan, this is what, what we're gonna offer from DESI. And I know it's a rhetorical question, but I think it's an important one that all of us up here get every day at PAC meetings, at football meetings, at baseball fields, at Livingston Street Park. And we can, we're all aware, people that were on the school committee, the learning loss, the regression, kids that have never had an MCAS test, kids that have skipped. And my concern moving forward is just putting, trying to reset them and put them back in that place, like my colleagues have said, oh, well, let's just reset. I don't think it's that simple myself. So.
I think that we will see continued improvement for, for students. And I think that it is on us to, to promote a culture where this is one piece, and we've had several conversations, this is one piece of a really large data profile of, of a student. And every superintendent that we were with at that conference would agree. And there were, there was even some presentations around accountability and, and from, you know, the commissioner himself talking about how we, we really need to take care of the students in front of us. And we will do that in Tewksbury. We will take care. I will always tell teachers to take care of the kids in, in front of them. And, you know, last year, I remember having, we had some data meetings around some math, universal screening, and some teachers really, really upset, coming to me upset that their students hadn't made the progress. This was last year in a different district, that, you know, maybe was expected by the district, you know? And I couldn't have been more proud of that teacher for the way that she was supporting the students in front of her, the needs that were in front of her. And the needs that were in front of her weren't the needs, their, their, their math needs. They weren't. These kids were really struggling to be back in school. And so I think that we, we let teachers know that we, you know, we're always talking about using your professional judgment in how to move your, your students forward. I feel like we are giving them, a, a big piece of it is giving them the right tools. And I think that's where DESI is helping. They need to have high-quality resources at their fingertips and they need to have instructional support. And that is something that, that we're providing, that I, I do hope will, will have a positive, a positive impact.
And I'm sorry, but you asked, and we did hear from a national speaker on a new term called, well, that was new to us, benefits-based accountability, a system that's used in hospitals and businesses all over the world, but not, not so much in education. And the speaker was John Tanner from Brave Ed. So it's one word, Brave Ed, if you want to look this up. And it really speaks to your question, Mr. Sullivan, how do we look at accountability differently? Because if we set goals, like we did today even in our DLT walk-around, we set objectives and we look at the benefits-based accountability towards what we were looking at, well, there's, there's also really, really relevant data. So I encourage you to look at that a little bit. And I think it, it does require us looking at accountability in schools differently. It just does. And I, and I can say to parents and students, if they're watching, I, I doubt it, but we have faith they're gonna be successful in life, whether they like this MCAS test score report or not. We have faith in that and that they will learn and they will do very well leaving us, because that's the system we're setting up regardless of this whole MCAS story this year.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Okay. Cruel put in me last.
Well, I really put myself last.
So I'll, I'll try to keep myself brief. So I, I am wondering, and I'm just gonna ask for a brief update next meeting on DESI raising the benchmarks of their proficiency standards. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but DESI came to the conclusion and agreed that proficient is gonna be a little bit higher, meeting expectation's a little bit higher. So just a quick summary of that change coming, just so the committee and families and everyone is in the know of that. But I, I do just want to emphasize and name, while yes, it was pretty obvious that the past few years, obviously, achievement was going to decline in the face of the pandemic and all the challenges associated with it. But I do want to name that despite all of that disruption of learning and the surrounding context around learning in this district, we were very proactive in putting the systems in place to help students when we got here now. Which again, I'm not the expert and won't teach for all of education in Mass. A lot of districts aren't as successful in being able to put those systems in place. And unfortunately, and this is the frustrating part of making change in education and implementing new systems and interventions, we're probably not going to see the fruits of all that labor for a few years down the road. And it's, it's hard, because you do an intervention, you talk about it, you make all the systems, everyone does everything. See the outcome of that? It, it takes time and a lot of patience and some other contexts will pop up and it'll be different. Education is incredibly complicated. I do feel good about what we're doing. And I know just kind of the tenor of what the state's saying about education, it's raising expectations around student achievement. But I can personally confidently say, they're raising the level of support to providing to reach those new expectations. And I know our administration is working hard to take advantage of all those grants and opportunities that exist. And then just one last point. It is refreshing to hear around the room, the test scores are not the holistic picture of the student, not in this town and nor should they be. It's one test administered over five or six days for a few bandwidth of students. It is a very limited, small picture of what our students can do. And it is comforting to know that, you know, one of the district's goals for this year is to develop the idea of what we want of our learners in Tewksbury and that definition and that profile that student is gonna be developed by people in Tewksbury. The MCAS is not the end-all-be-all. And I just want to say, I'm relieved that we're taking the time to do that work and defining like, what is a successful student in Tewksbury going to look like? But it's, it's complicated. I just want to name that I think we're doing the good work and to be patient and keep doing it.
All set.
That's all I have.
Thanks. So I'm gonna verge a little from the MCAS conversation. I wanted to just circle back on the committee that you mentioned in partnership with the sped, you know, administrators. I'm thrilled to hear about this. I'm really excited about this course and I hope you keep us updated.
Yeah, we will.
I think it sounds exciting and interesting. In what way will that incorporate or be incorporated with the new ELA curriculum?
Well, it's right in line with, you know, the, the ELA curriculum. But I think what, where it's, so we're looking at equity, right? And so we're looking to make sure that all of our practices are appropriate for all of our students and really trying to keep that, that lens at the forefront of our work. But we'll also hopefully be able to drive some of the interventions and the tier-one instruction so that we're really meeting the needs of, the, the goal is all of our students, you know? And I think that's, that's the key, is how do you meet the needs of all of the students? Students with learning disabilities, students who are accelerated, students. And so that's the focus of this group. We've only had the first two hours with about three hours of homework, so I think I have 40 more hours. So we'll, we'll keep you updated.
That's exciting. Thank you. I look forward to it. Okay. And moving on, Mr. Libby, to the budget timeline.
Yeah, sure. So typically around this time of year, I provide an update on the budget process. Feels like we're just dipping our toes into the school year this year, but it's already time to start planning our fiscal outlook for next year. So first page of the memo just kind of outlines the process we, we begin to go through in the business office and sort of what defines our budget. Salary, operating, capital outlay and fixed costs are the four categories that kind of make up our budget. We focus, much of our focus is on salary, since that's 70% of our, the budget that we control. We look at our operating costs and any new funding opportunities that we, that might be available to us, capital outlay projects that are based on needs that are presented to us by the school building administrators and in conjunction with our maintenance folks. And see, we highlighted here, all decisions regarding school budget are guided by our district goals and priorities. We always try to keep those in mind as we make any decisions on our, on our budget. Challenges specific to this budget that we'll be working on during this school year, the move into the center elementary school, of course, be a huge impact on our staffing models, what they need in that school for supplies and materials. We have no idea what the impact will be on our utility use and consumption and transportation. We're gonna do some modeling of some different transportation models during the spring as we move into next year and see what those might look like as we move forward too. Appropriate use of COVID grant funding that we still have to spend next year and the year after, hopefully address some of this learning loss and as well as some of our physical plant needs in the schools. And as always, this time of year, state and local revenues are unknown, but we still have to make some assumptions and develop a budget. So early November, we'll meet with the town manager and he'll ask us to give us, give him an estimate of a level service budget, which means sort of keeping the same staff in place with a roll forward of collective bargaining agreements that we have in place this year. And he'll have an idea then of forecasted revenues, new revenues that the town will foresee, if he knows about any increases in our fixed costs. And he'll have a number, we'll have a number, and we'll work towards a, a number we can all live with at, at that time. I'll meet with the building principals early, throughout November and into December to get specific requests that they are looking for for next year. December, by December 16th, we'll ask principals to submit their top two priorities, which our view with, with the superintendents. We'll figure out if we can fund those within the budget, within a grant, or if they're something, maybe we could look at a warrant article, any source of funding that we could, we could use to fund any of those priorities that the, the principals need. And then on or before January 13th, by the town bylaw, we have to present to the town manager our preliminary budget, just with salary, operating, capital outlay numbers at that time. We begin the series of public hearings during January, February and March, where we invite the public to participate in the budget process if they wish, where we present the budget here, before, prior to school committee meetings. We present the budget to the finance committee. We don't have that date. They do their. They do their finance committee meetings with different departments throughout the spring. And then on May 3rd is when the budget officially gets approved at the annual town meeting. So that's sort of the timeline that we look at as we move forward here into, already here, budget season.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns? Anybody?
Love budget season. I have no questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Libby. And just a matter of point of order, I had some pages stuck together, and so I overlooked. We have some committee business that we need to undertake. The school committee will be attending the MAS, MAS Conference, which is Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents combined annual business meeting in November. And so we need to see if there's any interest, and then in turn nominate a delegate who will be designated to vote for the committee. Is there any interest?
I'll raise my hand. I'll raise my hand and express interest if the committee will indulge.
Anybody with interest?
I'm not going to fight you for it.
Okay. So is there a?
I'll make a motion.
And do we have a second?
To appoint Rich Russo as our official delegate for the MAS, MAS joint conference in November.
Okay. And you'll be voting on the MAS 2022 resolutions?
Yep.
So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No oppose? That passes unanimously. Thank you for volunteering, Mr. Russo.
Of course.
Okay. And school matters of interest. And I'll start with Mr. Sullivan. Do you have any?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Parsons?
Not at this time.
Just, sorry, I was trying to grab you before the past, it says you need an alternate delegate. Do you have to do that, or is that just a formality on the form? Just, I don't know, when you submit this, how that works?
Mr. Johnson, do you know? Are we required to have a delegate and to have an alternate?
Madam Chair, I'll offer that we have never done that in the past. I'm pretty confident Mr. Russo is going to show up in it.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
Formalities.
Okay. Oh, thank you for bringing that up.
I have nothing.
No malice?
No.
I actually have a couple. I first wanted to point out, I noticed in an email from Principal Long that the high school guidance department is partnering with Mass Hire that assists with assisting students interested in part-time work. They help with resumes, interview tips, and support to high school students, and that information's on the website. I found that pretty interesting. So for anybody who has high school students, I think that's kind of a neat thing that's going on right now. And then the Tewksbury Public Library is partnering with the Wilmington Public Library for a reading challenge. It's called Reading Rivals. This is the second year, they're going head-to-head with the Wilmington Library. So if anybody's interested, it's for all ages, audiobooks do count, and information's on the Tewksbury Public Library website. There's an app you can put on your phone to track your reading. So I would love to see Tewksbury represent a little bit. And then third and final thing I wanted to mention is, I'm interested in exploring a new school committee onboarding process to formally establish some sort of routines when members join the committee. So I just wanted people to be aware of that. Those are all my updates. We have future school committee meeting dates on November 16th, 2022, and December 7th, 2022. And then the conference that we just mentioned will be in early November, the first week in November. The future subcommittee and advisory committee meeting dates, elementary school building committee is October 13th, CPAC business meeting, October 20th, wellness, December 7th, and policy subcommittee on October 18th. Any future agenda items that anybody would like to raise?
I've done.
Not going to see none.
Madam Chair, I just would like to reiterate, premise the president's request that we do have the update from Desi on raising the proficiency standard threshold as an agenda item for next meeting.
Okay. And so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Russo, so do you, how do you vote, Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Be Johnny Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Chairwoman's aye as well, so we adjourn tonight at 7:55 PM. Thank you.